Council and to Executive Board and our visiting audience here this morning, also our council and whoever is on the Zoom. Just want to wish everyone a good morning. And I guess today, you know, we're just want to pray for all of our oyate across the reservation today. Dear Lord, as we gather around this room this morning, I pray that you watch over all of us today as we come together and we make some decisions on behalf of our oyate across the reservation and elsewhere. This morning, I just want to remember our our oyate that are in the hospital this morning, some that are suffering with this virus, COVID virus, some at home that are in quarantine. I just want to pray that you watch over each and every one of them and give them strength and give them healing blessings this morning, Lord, so that they can feel better soon. I pray. That you know, wherever he is in the spirit world, Lord, I know that
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman. So call on our council, Councilman Carlo to do an introduction and ask someone to do the words encouragement by Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome and good morning to all tribal council members, members of the executive committee, district members and entire membership. Wakamani District today is very humble but extremely proud to host the council meetings. I would like to acknowledge Ogallala Cota County Schools for being gracious and allowing Wakamani District to host the tribal council meeting here at William C. Bear Gymnasium. Want to thank the different community organizations for the meals they will be preparing for all attendees. And I ask that everyone say prayers for the family of one of our community members, Marvin Badlo and his family, who they're going through a really extremely tough time. And he had many years of dedicated service to the Ogallala Sioux Tribe. And at a later councilman has request that a special honor for him and his family be on the agenda. I'm going to call on one of our district members, Ms. Nancy Hussman, to give the words of encouragement this morning.
Good morning, tribal council. This morning, I would like to congratulate the Kaila Muso Administration. And I know that you came into a very challenging time within the government. And it's not going to get easy as you look towards the future. Things seem to be, to not improve, but to be getting worse. And so, and all our people are suffering, many, many of our people are suffering from this COVID. And it seems to be mutating all the time. And so I know that you have a big challenge. And you had not only with the COVID, but with many, many areas on our reservation. Lacking healthcare or water. And our health, the health of our elderly. But I know that you are all very strong people. I worked for this government for over 46 years. And I'm very, very proud to have done that. And I'm very proud of our government. To make even a minute improvement for our government is really something because it is very, very hard to do that. And just like Mike said with this building, I remember Bill, who used to take all his grandchildren. And Stacy was one of them. They used to have a ball team traveling all around to play ball. He really encouraged our youth. So I'm very honored and proud to be in this building and proud to be standing here honored before you because I love this government. And I think that with the many, many challenges that you have, you always have to protect our sovereignty. We are the great Ogallala Cota Nation. And we've always assumed that position. When I was tribal secretary, the Navajos used to come to ask for our aid in many areas. And so I'm very proud of this government. And I think that you have many challenges to face, but I know that you all are very capable, very capable. That's why your people elected you from each district. And I'm very proud of all of you. And I could never criticize this government because I've worked with all of you through the many years and many administrations. And I know that you all try and give your best. So once again, I encourage you to keep moving in that direction and always remember our oyate. Wopilapunga.
I'd like to thank Sonia for the prayer, Nancy for the words of encouragement. And today, we have a special birthday boy at the council, so I'm going to sing him a happy birthday here. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday Tyler. Happy birthday to you. How old are you now? How old are you now? Do you snore like a bear? Do you walk like a duck? How old are you now? Do you forget council and committee meetings? How old are you now? Happy birthday nephew.
Thank you, Uncle Mike. Thank you, everybody. Uh, thank you, Councilman. That was the remix for happy birthday. Uh, no, thank you, Councilman Carlo. I appreciate, you know, just you setting this up. And to all of our district reps from Wakamani, uh, being from Red Cloud Community. Uh, but it's always a good thing, you know, to just be in your own home community and um, Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston for giving the prayer, uh, Councilwoman Sears, I'm not sure if you would like to say something, but it's just, again, it's just good to be here and, uh, you know, and thank you, Ms. Hussman for that, uh, encouragement. And it's really, you know, it's just about, you know, if you've been in this kind of stuff, you understand. Um, so, so I appreciate you sharing that with the public. Again, thank you. Uh, Councilman Sears, do you want to say something then? Councilman Jeff Eagle?
Yes, um, thank you. Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Um, I'm not able to be there in person today, but I just wanted to, um, wish everybody a good day and, you know, and thank Wakamani District, um, out there for inviting us out here and allowing us to have our council meeting and um, I'm just encouraging everybody to do your best today and I will be off at noon today because I do have a doctor's appointment. That's why I had to Zoom today, so I wish everybody and all the honorees today, I wish you the best. Thank you.
Uh, thank Councilwoman Spartan. Take care of your health. We understand. Uh, Councilman, Jeff Eagle?
Uh, I was just raising my hand for the two thirds items.
Okay, good, uh, jumpstart. That's, that's good. Uh, good, uh, Secretary, can you do a vocal?
Wesley Hocken Senior. Blaine Little Thunder is excused. Cora Whitehorse.
Here.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Here.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Here.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior. Ron DeBrey. James Cross.
Here.
Ella John Carlo. George Dreamer Junior. Gillian Spotted Bear, present. Richard Ironclad.
Here.
David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Jackie Sears.
Here.
Michael Carlo Senior.
Present.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Here.
Garfield Still.
Here.
Craig Dillon.
Here.
All right, council, we have 20 members present, one excused. Um, and again, uh, give prayers to our other councilmen who's, uh, I believe is up in North Dakota right now, so this sends a prayer for him as well. So thank you, uh, council. Uh, there's a approving the agenda, so I think, uh, Councilman, or sorry, uh, Chairman Jeff Eagle has his hand up. Uh, Chairman, do you want to present your two thirds items? I think that's why you have your end up.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So the first item is, um, resolution of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe authorizing the Ogallala Lakota Housing Authority to apply for 501(c)(3) tax status motion.
Okay.
All right, motion made seconded by Councilwoman Carl and Councilman Rodriguez. Uh, any discussion to two thirds that on at this time, hearing or seeing none online or person? Secretary, if you call the role to two thirds that on, thank you.
Wesley Hocken Senior.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella John Carlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear, yes. Richard Ironclad. David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston, uh, Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Michael Carlo Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Uh, well, the council motion passes 24 zero against. Thank you, uh, Chairman, you have another item?
Thank you, Chair. Resolution of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe approving amending OS Alix Resolution 2018 dash 00, approving waiver of up to $8,000 of accounts receivables balanced on home ownership units for conveyance eligibility motion.
Uh, motion by the chair, seconded by Vice Chair Yellowboy. Any discussion on to two thirds that on at this time? Seeing or hearing none, um, Secretary will call the role, please. Thank you.
Wesley Hocken Senior.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella John Carlo.
Yeah.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yeah.
Gillian Spotted Bear, yes. Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston, uh, Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Michael Carlo Senior.
Yeah.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yep.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
All right, council motion's passing unanimously 24 zero against, um, uh, Chairman, your next item?
Um, ordinance of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe amending the supervision section of ordinance 22 dash 03 adopting a COVID-19 response program hiring process motion.
Uh, motion major second. A second by, uh, Councilman Hopkins. Any discussion? Hearing or seen none online or in person, Secretary will call the role, please. Thank you.
Wesley Hocken Senior.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella John Carlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear, yes. Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston, uh, Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Michael Carlo Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yeah.
Garfield Still.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yep.
Council motion passes 24 zero against. Thank you, Council. Uh, Chairman, you have another item?
Yeah, one more. Um, this one is the, uh, it's a new proposal package for IHS and it's dealing with, um, wait, let me find the resolution. It is the um, anyway, it has to do with, um, Jennifer and I didn't get the, we had a emergency, uh, HHS meeting yesterday so we could get it on. I didn't get the paperwork, but it was approved, but it's a resolution. Um, approving the attorneys to negotiate, um, with IHS on more funding for the master house contract. Um, whenever I get the paperwork, we'll, uh, I'll get, I'll get it out all to you guys, but that's my motion to add two thirds that on.
So motion to two thirds on, um, should I say discussion or?
No, it's a, it's a, it's a resolution to approving the attorneys to, um, negotiate for more money for the master house contract. Not a question, it's, and I have all the paperwork, I just, I don't see it in the HHS two thirds package, but it was approved at committee yesterday.
Okay, nice. Um, so there's a motion made, uh, is there a second? Second by Councilman Carl, Councilman Rodriguez and Councilman Hopkins. Any discussion with two thirds that on at this time, seeing or hearing none online or person, Secretary, uh, if you call the role, please. Thank you.
Wesley Hocken Senior.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella John Carlo. George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear, yes. Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston, uh, Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Michael Carlo Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Um, so after 24 zero against, thank you, council. Uh, Chairman, do you have anything else?
That's it. Thank you, council. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Appreciate it. Um, so, uh, is there other items to, okay, sorry. Um, Chairman Watkins, the HHS or Law and Order Committee?
No, thank you, Chairman. I've got, um, two of them. Resolution of Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council. Ogallala Sioux Tribe approving the purchase with 911 surcharge phone for Master Street address and guide preparation charger for OST Department of Public Safety from Century, Century Link Human Pure Box 52187, Pink, Arizona. Eight five oh seven two dash two one eight seven for $10,000. Hundred and fifty dollars. Motion.
So some motion being by Chairman Watkins, seconded by Vice Chair Rodriguez and Councilman DeBrey. Um, is there any discussion on this? Hearing or seeing none to two thirds this on, um, Secretary will call the role, please. Thank you.
Wesley Hocken Senior.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella John Carlo.
Okay, you got the lead? Okay, okay, bye.
Ella John Carlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear, yes. Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston, uh, Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Michael Carlo Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yeah.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Uh, motion passed unanimously 24 zero against. Thank you, uh, Council. Uh, Chairman, your next up?
Yes, I got the second one. The equal attorney Dana had a contract. Motion to put it on. Also, um, also let you know that he'll be here at one o'clock for interview.
Uh, there's a motion to put on the equal contract for Mr. For, uh, for discussion and action. Um, is there any, any discussion, um, go second?
Yeah.
Okay, seconded by Councilman DeBrey. Um, any other further discussion or questions or action? Uh, hearing none, Secretary will call the role, please. Thank you.
Wesley Hocken Senior.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior. Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella John Carlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear, yes. Richard Ironclad. David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston, uh, Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Michael Carlo Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
All right, council motion passes 24 zero against. Thank you, council. Uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, do you have anything else?
Yeah, um, we need to have CPS, um, issue come up, um, they'll go into exact when we have it. And I'd like to have chief of staff present when it comes on.
Okay, so CPS, discussion, uh, do you need to add that or do you just, whatever? Okay, so there's a motion to add CPS discussion to the agenda. That would be an executive because that's deal with um, personnel as two thirds, uh, says their second, like, Vice Chair Rodriguez, uh, any discussion on that, hearing none, Secretary will call the role, please. Thank you.
Wesley Hocken Senior.
Yes.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella John Carlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear, yes. Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston, uh, Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Michael Carlo Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still. Garfield Still. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Uh, I, nineteen, uh, people voted for it. Nineteen councilmembers voted for it. One of them was getting one vote for it, so, um, so, uh, well, actually, yeah, he's, uh, excuse on that vote, so, um, uh, Chairman, do you have anything else?
No, I'll be off. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Chairman Watkins. Appreciate it. Uh, Chairman Carl, and then Chairman Dreamer react to that. Um, okay, and then, is there, okay, so then there's, so we've got Law and Order, I'm sorry. We have Land, EVD, then Finance. Okay, so quick, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First resolution that comes from the Land Committee is a resolution of Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council approving the, or authorizing the executive committee of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe to enter into a telecommunications agreement with Golden West Telecommunications. Motion to two thirds that on.
Motion to two thirds that on, like, by, uh, Councilman Watkins, Councilman Spotted Bear. And I think it was Councilman Jeff Eagle, I think, so, um, okay, uh, any further discussion on this item, hearing none, uh, Secretary will call the role, please. Thank you.
Wesley Hocken Senior.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior. Wendell Youngman Junior. Ron DeBrey. James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear, yes. Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston, huh, Jackie Sears.
Uh-huh.
Michael Carlo Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
That motion passes twenty-four zero against, thank you, uh, council, uh, chairman, your next one. Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Gonzalez was working on. A draft and I don't know if it was gonna be just a resolution or. We requested that the annual budget of solid waste be attached to. The resolution that we passed a few weeks ago. Requesting that the Bureau of Indian Affairs and IHS totally fund the solid waste. Program for the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And he's gonna, um, have a cover letter that we're requesting that he sign. Mister President and we forward all those documents to the proper agencies, not only Aberdeen, but Washington DC.
Okay, thank you, uh, there's a motion, there's a second, second by, yeah, a second by, uh, Councilman Dreamer. Uh, um, chairman, can you, uh, clarify that motion one more time for the second one? Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, okay, great, got it?
Um, Mike, Mr. Carlo, uh, when that resolution was, um, approved. I did request to solid waste that we needed a copy of that budget. I was told by them and that, um, Mario was going to be putting something in. And that he was going to be submitting it to us. And so that way I could just attach it to the resolution, however, um, they're still not, um, they didn't send it to me yet.
Yesterday, we finally received the budget from solid waste. And Mr. Gonzalez was at the meeting, so he said that he would prepare whatever documents that we needed for the council meeting. Especially that budget, we need to attach that, that's the key component on the request for. Total funding by BI and IHS on solid waste. I'll try to contact him to see what he's done, I don't see anything on my email yet. But if we can at least put that on for discussion. Because that resol- I mean, that budget does have to be part of that resolution that we're forwarding on.
Okay, so that a motion having been seconded, uh, is there further discussion? Hearing or seeing down online or person, secretary call the role, please, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear, yes. Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yeah.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston, huh. Jackie Sears.
Uh-huh.
Michael Carlo Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yeah.
Garfield Still.
Yep. Yes.
Counsel, motion passes unanimously, uh, chairman, your next one.
So she knows, did you give any other items? Some grace?
Um, Mr. Carlo, um, there is a packet out, um, in addition to that. What, run resolution, you had, um, read regarding Golden West. Uh, the, the top memo on it, uh, the first is a motion. Um, I can read it, that first one, it says motion by Julian Spotted Bear, second by Ella John to have the attorney draft the resolution. To the superintendent, Mrs. Dina DuVale. To be present at OST council meeting in person. And to have someone be assigned to the realty office down here to help with the leases, mortgages, et cetera, as soon as possible. That, that is on the letter dated January twenty-fourth.
Okay, well, the, other resolution that we need to, uh, resolution to support mandatory. Cool for beef. And it's section two seven one six, and the attorney will have updated document sent to secretary for two thirds. Of the resolution that we had in our package yesterday was not on travel format, so. Um, that was supposed to be done also for our meeting today, so motion to two thirds, Adam.
All right, there's a second, second by Councilman DeBrey, uh, is there further discussion? Hearing or seeing none, secretary will call the role, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey. James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear, yes. Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston, huh, Jackie Sears.
Uh-huh.
Michael Carlo Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior. Garfield Still.
Yeah.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Counsel, motion passes twenty-four zero against. Our last item, Mr. Chair is a resolution. That the attorney will be sending. And it's to allow the following individuals to work together. To complete a needs assessment to justify access to infrastructure funds. And also other federal appropriations funding under the Mini Wachoni Act.
Right, so the motion made second by Councilman Watkins. Uh, any discussion on that? Hearing or seeing none, secretary will call the role, please, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear, yes, Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston, huh, Jackie Sears.
Uh-huh.
Michael Carlo Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yep.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Okay, council, motion passes nineteen forty-one, I'm voting, thank you, council, uh, chairman, I think that's it, right? Yeah, thank you, uh, chairman, uh, chairman Dreamer, uh, E B D.
Thank you, President K, I've got three items here. Um, first one is. Ordnance of Galsu Tribal Council, Galsu Tribe to amend the Galsu Tribe Marijuana Control Ordinance to authorize. Temporarily transporting and testing the cannabis product by testing lab located outside of tribal, uh, motion.
Motion made second by Councilman Colonel, Councilman Vice Chair Youngman. Any discussion? Hearing none, secretary will call the role, please, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear, yes. Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston, huh, Jackie Sears.
Uh-huh.
Michael Carlo Senior. Michael Carlo Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yeah.
Garfield Still.
Yep.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
All right, council, motion passes twenty-four zero against. Uh, chairman, dreamer, your next one.
Second one is Resolution of Galsu Tribal Council, having Ron DeBrey to the Economic and Business Development Committee, motion.
Motion made second by, uh, Councilman Watkins, any discussion on that, hearing none, uh, secretary will call the role, please, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey. James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Hmm. Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Um, yes.
Julian Spotted Bear, yes, Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston, huh, Jackie Sears.
Uh-huh.
Michael Carlo Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Yeah.
Craig Dillon.
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel, motion passes nineteen forty-one, I'm voting, thank you, council, uh, chairman, your next one.
Oh, thank you, chair, Steve Grant's still working on this, uh, the resolution for this third, third item. So when it gets completed, I'll bring it back, so we're just waiting to get it.
Uh, it's for the land, it's for the gravel project, craft reservation.
So, um, that will present as soon as it gets it complete.
Okay, so I'll just tell gravel. Project. Um, any, or is there a second, second by Vice Chair Youngman? Is there any discussion on this, hearing none, secretary will call the role, please, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear, yes. Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston, huh, Jackie Sears.
Uh-huh.
Michael Carlo Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yeah.
Garfield Still.
Yep.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Counsel, motion passes twenty-four zero against, thank you, council, uh, chairman, do you have any others? Um, that's it for E B D community, thank you, community, thank you, council, yeah, thank you, uh, chairman, appreciate it. Uh, uh, chairman, White Horse or Vice Chair. Oh boy, uh, I'm not sure what to present.
Thank you, I, I have them open, so.
Okay, Craig, true.
The first item is the resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe approving. The offer and expenditure of twenty-five thousand dollars as a reward for finding Cheryl. Tia Long Soldier, motion to two thirds on.
And motion made second by Vice Chair Yellowboy, uh, any discussion on this? Hearing or seeing none, secretary will call the role to this, two thirds this item on the agenda, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior. Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear, yes, Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston, huh, Jackie Sears.
Uh-huh.
Michael Carlo Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior. Garfield Still. Garfield Still.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
All right, council, motion passes twenty-four zero against, thank you, council, uh, chairman, White, White Horse, your next one.
Okay, thank you, um, number two, we have the ordinance of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. Appropriating one million nine hundred fifty thousand for essential home repairs. For tribal members with uninhabitable or substandard housing conditions that present an increased risk. Of COVID nineteen transmission or that interfere with the ability of household members to quarantine. Shelter in place or otherwise comply with COVID nineteen related public health measures, motion to two thirds on.
The motion, uh, second by Vice Chair Yellowboy, uh, any discussion on this? Hearing none, uh, secretary will call the role, please, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear, yes, Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston, huh, Jackie Sears.
Uh-huh.
Michael Carlo Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yeah.
Garfield Still.
Yep.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Counsel, motion passes twenty-four zero against, thank you, uh, chairman, your next one.
Um, number three, ordinance of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe to amend the budget for the Oglala Sioux Tribe. Day Labor Program for Containment. for containment and mitigation of the COVID nineteen public health emergency on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation as adopted by ordinance numbers twenty one dash ninety three and amended by ordinance number twenty two dash zero six. Motion to two thirds on.
Uh, motion to two thirds on, there's second, second by Vice Chair Yellowboy. Uh, any discussion? Sure, none. Secretary, call it all, please.
Wesley Hawkins Senior. Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey. James Cross.
Yes.
Hello, Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear, yes. Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Puer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Jackie Sears. Michael Carlo Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior. Garfield Still.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Council motion passes twenty four zero against, uh, Chairman Whitehorse, your next one.
Thank you. Ordinance of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe amending ordinance number twenty two dash zero seven. And that's the, um, loan forgiveness, or debt forgiveness, or, um, loan forbearance ordinance. Um, it will include the timeline. Um, motion to two thirds on.
Right, motion to two thirds on, there's second, second by Councilman Hawkins. Uh, further discussion to two thirds on, seeing your hearing done, Secretary, call it all, please. Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior. Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey. James Cross.
Yes.
Hello, Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear, yes. Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Puer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Jackie Sears.
Yeah.
Michael Carlo Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior. Garfield Still.
Yeah.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Council motion passes to two thirds on, eighteen S, one no, and one extension. Um, Chairman, your next one.
That's it. That's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate it. Thank you, uh, Vice Chair Yellowboy. Um, Chairman DeBrey, do you have any two thirds on? No, we don't. Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, motion, oh. So you got, uh, yeah, one more youth affairs, uh, Chairman Canoyer Junior.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. We only have one item, and it's the ordinance of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe establishing a youth advisory officer position within the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe pursuant to Oglala Sioux Tribal Constitution, Article Three, Section Six. Motion.
Motion made, there's second. The second by, uh, Councilman Dreamer and Councilman Yellowboy. Any discussion on this? Hearing or seeing none, Secretary, call it all, please. Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior. Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey. James Cross.
Yes.
Hello, Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear, yes. Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Puer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Jackie Sears. Michael Carlo Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior. Garfield Still.
Yeah.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
All right, Council motion passes twenty four zero against, uh, Chairman Canoyer Junior, the missing out from the first.
Thank you, Chair. That's it.
All right, thank you, uh, Chairman. Appreciate it. Uh, so there's a motion to approve the agenda by Councilman Carlos, seconded by Councilman Yellowboy. Uh, any discussion on that? Hearing or seeing none? All right, Councilwoman Whitehorse, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. I have, I have a concern and, um, I don't know if it's been discussed in Education Committee yet, but nothing was brought to the floor. And my concern is that we're now at the red risk level. And, um, I, I've only seen three plans for schools. And all three of them said they were going to follow the tribe's guidelines for the red risk level, but they're all currently in school. So, um, can we, can we add that for discussion?
Um, Chairman DeBrey, are you okay with that? I guess we leave it up to Chairman DeBrey.
We are aware of that, and I got Dana, our education director, addressing that issue with the schools. And any changes that they make on their, their, uh, process, their original process that they gave to the tribe, any changes to that, they will have to bring in front of committee to, or to accept those changes. They can't arbitrarily make changes on their own. So, we are.
Sorry. I, I think that's where my issue is because, um, I know that um, there was at least one school who updated their plan without any approval and just gave it to Dana. And that was like, two weeks ago. Because I've been getting calls from, um, teachers and parents of that school. So maybe if Dana could make a report on, on those plans and what's updated and what's not, because I know, I know I'm not the only one getting calls. I know that. So I guess I would like to make a motion to two thirds that onto the agenda. Second.
So, um, let me clarify, uh, Councilman, so would that be a, that would be a report from Dana?
Well, she's the one who keeps the plans, right?
Correct.
Tribal Education Department, so I, I guess it would need to come from Dana.
Okay. So we're, I'm just trying to clarify. So, I guess a motion made, having you seconded, um, a report from, by this. Okay, uh, yes, having my seconded by Councilman Duckneal, uh, to have a report from Dana. There we go. Any discussion? Sure, none. Um, Secretary, call it all, please.
Wesley Hawkins Senior. Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBrey. James Cross.
Yes.
Hello, Giancarlo. George Dreamer.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Puer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Jackie Sears. Michael Carlo Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior. Garfield Still.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Um, Council motion passes twenty four zero against. Thank you, Council. Uh, so now there's a motion to two thirds the agenda on. Is it question or, okay, question, Council?
Mr. President, could we maybe, uh, I don't know, maybe doing the president's report, but could we add on the, uh, vaccine report from the treasurer because, uh, we're still getting calls from adult that got fully vaccinated. I have veterans that are fully vaccinated that, uh, submitted applications to the district cap offices. And I really think that, uh, without, it was not their fault, but somewhere application got lost, they still have not received a vaccine, uh, incentive. And so I did address that with the district as well as Mason, but, um, I haven't heard nothing back since then, and I really think we need to update on that today. If we can add that on to, uh, the agenda, just to report from them. I know they met yesterday, so I think we should get a report from them.
I'll second your motion, Sonia.
Okay, so we don't need to be grandstanding here, so. Um, okay, so there's, there's a motion made by Councilwoman Rock Weston. And it's seconded by Councilman Steele uh, to add the vaccination incentive report on, uh, the treasurer or, or, I mean, the treasurer's office. Okay, okay. Okay, so I got Councilwoman Spotted Bear, then Councilman Yellowboy. And then I think Councilman Sears.
Councilman, um, would you, would you like, would, can you amend your resolution to include the ARP update as well? Because I'm getting concerns that individuals are cashing other people's checks. And I have, um, pictures of them, so I'd like to hear the ARP update also. Okay, I, I don't mind that. I can, we can add that in there too.
Okay, thank you. So it'll be amended by Councilman Yellowboy and then Councilman Sears.
You know, these questions could be asked during the treasurer's report. Instead of making motions and letting our guests wait longer, and we have a agenda, so. I mean, that's my recommendation that we could just have these questions asked during the treasurer's report. That will alleviate a lot of motions and voting at the same time, so that's just my opinion.
All right, thank you. Um, Councilman Sears.
Yes, um, I just wanted to say that, um, what, uh, Julian had brought up to add the ARPA um, also a report, and I believe we need to do it now because that will give, uh, the treasurer a little time to get it gathered for, uh, later on in a meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, any further discussions, seeing none, Secretary, call it all, please. Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior. Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
No.
Ron DeBrey. James Cross.
Yes.
Hello, Giancarlo. George Dreamer Junior. Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Puer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Jackie Sears. Michael Carlo Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior. Garfield Still.
Yep.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Council passes eighteen S, one no, one not voting. Thank you, Council. So there's a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Councilman Carlos, seconded by Councilman Puer to approve the agenda. So, oh, sorry, sorry, Councilman Yellowboy. Sorry, that's a yellow boy. Um, sure, sure, discussion, hearing man, uh, Secretary, call it all, please, to approve the agenda.
Wesley Hawkins Senior. Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Corn, Canoyer, Gerald Canoyer Junior, excuse me.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior. Ron DeBrey. James Cross. James Cross.
Yes.
Hello, Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Puer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Jackie Sears. Michael Carlo Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior. Garfield Still.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Council motion passes twenty four zero against. Thank you, Council. So, uh, so we can move on to item number six, which is the honoring. So thank you again to our public who's waiting to be, uh, part of the honoring on item number six. Uh, what you just saw is this, you know, it's how we process some of the items that don't get on during regular session or during, uh, for various reasons, but, you know, there's motion that you can actually do two thirds and you add it to the agenda. And, um, so that's what we've been doing. So just adding, uh, important items to, to this discussion or definitely passage on. Again, it's just, you know, being able to explain what's going on, being able to just interpret that, and it's actually good government, so thank you. Um, so that's what we've been doing. Um, so we have item number six. Um, Secretary, I, I guess I'll turn this over to you. Uh, if you want to kind of give a background on, on the first honoring, uh, and, uh, just that, that the public and council and all, what were your?
At this time, we would like to do the honoring for, um, the New Year baby. And, um, to begin the, um, this little program that we have, I wanted to call upon Mr. Chris Eaglehawk to come forward and to explain a little bit about, um, about the honoring that we're doing here this morning, so.
Generations. Days, uh. The joy, the happiness. All these celebrations throughout the generations. And this is why, so, and they've been doing this for quite a few years. Because a lot of people are involved and. So. And three years he, uh. Not even, but, uh, yeah. Teachers. The logo that was made. Ask me to interpret the logo. But the thing that was on the logo, I noticed that it was stars. Uh, in our belief system that, uh, you know, we, we come from, uh. According to style knowledge, highly developed style knowledge that we had, the spirits came through. Passed over south side and when the wind blew in it, um, brought the spirit into the parents. And so it was. The mother and father. There were footprints on your tape. At the day, the footsteps, the journey of life. It was in a circle. It's gonna have a journey around the circle of life. But during the journey, all the way around to, they come back around to. The children. We look at life as balance, so there's gonna be life and there's gonna be death. And so in the circle that the same things are gonna happen to this child as they grow up. And it's very important, especially for. But, um. They do things, they sing, they pray. So, you know, it's very pity that we have a lot of media for this ceremony. Other things on that, uh, logo, I haven't seen it for us. I kind of forgot. Uh, similar thing, other things that are in it, but the logo has a lot of meaning to it. And, uh. Relative, the Mary Felicia, every year she would make those items for the newborn to, uh, as gifts. And to, uh, uh, any of the child. And, you know, as, as people, uh, we, we need to start calling, calling them what they are. Uh, the, uh, the children, uh, and Hukshira. Um. And by the relative name. The children. Cause I, I couldn't. The names that, uh, I couldn't remember. Another name I named was Chris, but it's cool. Calling somebody named Chris. Who that is. It's a lot of relative terms. And the, and the guys, hey, they're calling your name. But who's that? The Chris they're calling. So they're going with the, the great name, uh, ourselves by relatives. So that's why I said it's very important. That, uh, we start calling them by their relative name. Because we kind of talk a lot of this, um, until they get to that age with, uh, older name ceremony. And they receive their Lakota name. There's a. Okay. Cause they're kind of jumping in like goats, baby goats. And they call them Yagras. Their names, and that's to me, that's our own natural, our name, name. Ceremony. And, uh, that's the under now, you know, so we need to go back to, uh. Centuries. As relative name, so, uh. Okay, and also the, the. On the logo. It's the home that here. Two is where they're putting it. Yeah, something that's okay, must be, and it's natural, and it's pure. And, uh, he is where you put it. Uh, so, you know, they, they take it to family. So, uh. So, uh, two, wah, he, wah is also what's natural about it is there's a man and a woman, a brother and a father. And so again, there's a man, I can't really talk about the mother part, uh, my sister used to talk about that. But I mean, she's no good anymore. That place as a father was very important. That balance of male and female. So the hands. The hands that hold a child. As a lot of teens growing up, you know, we, we were held as a baby, we were held as a child. All these good words came out like joy, happiness, you know? Responsibility, all these other ways that I said to this child. The thing, the life, something happens and, uh, they decided. We're moving, we were held as a child. So as adults, we need to go back to that sometimes and think about those ways that were. As a child. A bundle of joy. You thought happiness, you're empowered and you're talking to your ass. You know, those kinds of words are very important. Words are very powerful. So, you know, always remember that. Um. Styles and style language and the letters that they're doing as achievements as they're growing up. You know, when they get to a name, uh, when they, uh, earn something in life, uh. Sometimes we can give them feathers and pins and gratulations. And those are things that they're gonna have to earn. And when we guide them along with parents and grandparents, we are giving them guidance. It's very important. Uh, so those are things that, uh, um, like we need to, in this logo, there was made. So, uh, we can start with the beginning, uh. Nothing can. I have a, my job group, but, uh, somehow they all got jobs. And, uh, so they're leaving, I didn't have a job as an arrangement, so he said, uh, I'll come and see. All the songs. And so, uh, it's all based on the song that he has to see.
Uh, I guess the logo was made by Kim Randall. And Bernadette Danny told her we needed a logo for the New Year's baby. And she told her what she needed, so she, she, um, made the logo for the New Year's baby. And, um. She was supposed to be here, but she couldn't make it. And Bernadette Danny had a death in the family, so she couldn't be here. But in this, in the many years I've been doing this, I work with a group of people. And they all know what to do. The minute I say, and Mary usually, sometimes I get tired as I grew older. But I guess to go back, G. Wayne Tapio from Pine Ridge Village started this. And then when I became tribal secretary, he said, I think it would be better if you could carry the song. So he passed it on to me. So every, ever since I've been doing this and. G. Wayne used to bring the baby to the council meetings like this, so it's quite an honor today to do that. Because I know you guys have a busy schedule, but to recognize and honor the New Year's baby is just really a. Beautiful gesture on all of you to do that. And. We've had, I've been doing this for thirty-five years, so we went to many, many New Year's babies. And they really appreciated. In the two years, we didn't do it. They questioned my husband at the casino. Asking, is she gonna do it? And then my grandson too. JJ, they asked him, so I thought, well, this year I will do it again. And I didn't know who to approach, and I approached Stacy and she wholeheartedly agreed. That she would take the song. So I've been working with her and for many, many years, as soon as I said I was gonna do it. Everybody just got together. Mary usually made the stock with the matching diaper bag. KSDZ would start the sponsorships. And we lost one person over there, Mary, Mary Albert, I think was her name, but she. Pardon? Yeah, we lost her. Before that year, I was gonna honor her. She passed away. And then Philomena Cota, who used to give the history of the New Year's baby also, is no longer with us. But I know both of those ladies are here today in spirit. So I'm very, very thankful to all the team, the committee that I have. They just jump into. They all know what to do and they do it without any kind of, uh. Funds, money, they just donate their hours and their time to get this all together. And that really makes me feel good that these people care enough. And KSDZ is the main one. And, uh, Brenda, she, Brenda and Bernadette used to do all the legwork. Brenda would contact everybody and Bernadette used to do all the documents. So those two ladies played a big part in this. But every one of my team members that I work with all do it. With honor. They never asked for anything. But today we're gonna honor those people because I think they deserve to be recognized and honored. Or Pila Trunka.
Okay, Stacy, turn it over to you.
Well, yeah. Um, this committee has been, um, like Nancy said, this committee has been doing this honoring for many years. And this year, um, we talked about it and Nancy and I, and we wanted to recognize the committee that had made this possible. And, um, like she said, none of them has ever asked for anything out of it. They do it from the goodness of their hearts. And so, um, this year I wanted to do something special for all of them, so. Um, at this time, I would like to present some, um, certificates and, and other items to the committee members. And so we'll do that first before we get into the New Year's baby, so. Okay, so we'll go through the committee. And, um, we ask that, as we call your name, to come forward. Um, when we get done with this and then the New Year's baby, then we'll have a honoring song. So. So if you want to. Thanks.
So what we'll do is I'll read the, the first certificate of appreciation. And we'll, we'll call you up by name and, uh, and basically it's, uh, you know, it says the same thing, so we'll keep reading the same thing over. But again, you know, it's just calling your name, acknowledging and, uh, we'll come up here and just, just, um, and then. Okay, if you want to stand right here when you come up here and then we're gonna call your name, because we're gonna do an honor song for you as well, so. Um, so the first one is, uh, certificate of appreciation in honor of Chris Eaglehawk. Omakka Tetcha, Hukshira Ta.
Bums?
Celebration Committee.
We're gonna put them off in the lots.
Holds in, holds in high esteem tribal members who exemplify qualities and courage. Very referred to in generosity. The oldest tribal guy expresses appreciation to Mr. Eaglehawk for his commitment and participating in the. Omakka Tetcha, Hukshira, or Huk, 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 Ta and Petu Celebration Committee. So again, thank you, Chris, and, uh, we'll, we'll present some items, please. Okay, so next one is Nancy Hesler. Next one's Jim and Denise Rambley? Rambley. Uh, the next one's Bernadette Denny. And unfortunately, she's not here today, so we'll, we'll find a way to get to her, so. The next one is Brenda King. Okay, the next one is Mary Felicia. Okay, the next one is Kimberly Randall. Well, she's not here, okay, she's not here, so we'll we'll find a way to get to her, so. Okay, and this is a committee council and uh, listen, uh, the members online watching public. Um, and I think we're gonna do a song for them. And uh, yeah, so when we do the song, if you guys want to flip this way, well, she can, so. Um, so I guess if you're ready, whenever you're ready. Um, thank you, uh, council, I think we have one more honor, but again, thank you to our our um, our committee. And I think that we're gonna honor the babies, is that correct, Stacy? That, okay, so we're gonna do the honor of the babies, so if you guys get ready. And uh, we'll we'll call you after, I'll just keep that mic, so, so, I'll walk a bit, so, I'll just stand by for that.
At this time, we will be honoring the baby New Year. His name is Emmett Shane Quiver. He was born on January second, twenty twenty two, at one twelve P M. His father is Montane Quiver and his mother is Jasmine Hybo. And at this time, we would like the parents and the baby to come forward so that we can present them with a certificate. And also, um, we would like to give the parents jackets.
And the certificate says, Emmett Shane Quiver, parents Montane Quiver and Jasmine Hybo. The Olaf Street Tribe welcomes the first baby born in twenty twenty two. A new baby is a great blessing. May your journey be filled with positive growth, aspirations, and dreams of a beautiful life. It is with great pride that the Olaf Street Tribe, everybody recognizes and acknowledges the birth of the commission Quiver on January second, twenty twenty two. Present on this day, twenty fifth day of January, twenty twenty two, Kevin Kurov, president, Opil. Um, so for the safety of the baby, um, the we just wanna make sure that we protect the health. So um, we're gonna just do the song and then uh, that should be good. And then we got one more honor, a couple more arms after this, so, we can shake hands, so, um, go ahead, Seager, if you want it. Oh, Lippula, uh, sing, Lippula's a song. And again, uh, thank you to the family, thank you for bringing the baby today and uh, letting you know blessings, good health and all that, oh, thank you.
At this time, um, Nancy and uh.
That was the uh, welcoming of the child song. And I was holding the child and as a father, to hold a child and give it security to make sure it's uh, it learns that it's safe. This next song, uh, is uh, is welcoming the child to grandmother Earth. So welcome the child to our nation here and to grandmother Muhati Tola.
Um, thank you, Chris, appreciate it.
At this time, the committee will be presenting the gifts to the New Year's baby. And they have asked me to um, to uh, read the list of the gifts that were donated. And um, Nancy, are you ready back there? Congratulations, Emmett, you have won the Twisters twenty twenty two Pine Ridge New Year's Baby Contest for being the first baby born at the Pine Ridge Hospital in twenty twenty two. The Twister and our sponsors would like to welcome you with these gifts. The First National Bank, fifty dollars. Ape Store, White Clay, Nebraska, New Year's New Baby Blanket. Piece of Cake, Gordon, Nebraska, free sheet cake of your choice. Prairie Wind Casino, one overnight stay for two, two entrees and two twenty free place. Big Vats, Pine Ridge Chattering. Fifty dollar gas card. Pine Ridge Area Chamber of Commerce, Kyle, South Dakota, Baby Star Phil. Certificate presented. Gordon Superfoods, Gordon, Nebraska, twenty five dollar gift card. Ken's Clothing Center, Gordon, Nebraska, baby basket. Pinky Storm, Anderson, fifty dollar grocery gift certificate. Fireside Inn, White Clay, Nebraska, dinner for two for the parents. Liz Dakota Mart, Martin, South Dakota, fifty dollar gift card. Antelope Creek Cafe, Gordon, Nebraska, two lunch specials with drinks. White Clay Grocery and Post Office, White Clay in South Dakota. Seventy five dollar in-store gift certificate. Doug O'Brien Contracting, seventy five dollar gift gift card. Born Again Taxidermy in Martin, fifty dollar gift card for Liz Dakota Mart. Ogala Drifters Riding Baby Gift Basket and a hundred dollar gift card. Singing Horse Trading Post, Porcupine, South Dakota, seventy five gift certificate. Dale's Auto Sales Baby Gift Basket. Sheridan Lounge, twenty five gift certificate. Dale's Garden and McDonald's Eric, um, thirty dollar gift certificate. Butches H. Bat, Martin, South Dakota, twenty five dollar gift card. Rose Incorporated, Martin, South Dakota, fifty dollar gift certificate. G E Associates, Martin, South Dakota, twenty five dollar gift certificate. Lakota Funds, hundred dollars, presented by tribe. O S T Housing, twenty five dollars. Thunder Valley Baby Basket, presented by Nancy Hesman. Pine Ridge Subway, fifty dollar gift card. Lake Creek Electric, fifty dollar credit towards parents electric bill. The Twister, K S D Z, Gordon and K D J L Valentine. The Gift of Music in a Gift Basket, presented by Jim and Denise Lambly, Rachel Lambly and Brenda King. Also. Catholic Church and Emergency Mass Management Gift Basket. We also have a cake up here and um, I would like to have um Buzz Iron Cloud um, take it around and show it to the people here.
Uh, thank you, Secretary. And um. So on the gifts, it also there's an addition, says David Peary, twenty twenty two suburban, so.
And also, um, on the committee, Mary Felicia um, had the gift basket or the um, baby, baby blanket and um, bag for the child, so I wanted to mention that also. And next, um, Representative Yellow Boy will be doing the next um, honorings. And if you look at the list that we sent out, uh, number eleven and twelve um, were taken off the list. And number sixteen was taken off the list. And number seventeen will be presented tomorrow, she is unable to attend today.
I, the committee and I would also like to present Stacy with a jacket with the logo, her name in the front, with the killer administration. So this is in remembrance of this, this event that she'll be taking on from now on. And I really appreciate Stacy for doing that. Opilat Ranga, Stacy.
Okay, that's, I I think the council members from Ogala are up with the next honors. There's three members, so um, if you wanna proceed, I'm sure councilman Gilber or councilman Donovan, I'm sure I can do that, but. Um, but yeah, two of them, lots of names. And so Constance Cooney, Herbert Kussmer and Norbert Dickrow. You guys are gonna be on standby, um, they're gonna, they're gonna honor his, so, honor him, you know.
Good afternoon, everybody, um, thank you for coming, all the guests, and good morning or good afternoon, council. Take up a little bit of your time here today. Um, you know, both my colleague and I were giving a lot of thought into our members of our district of who, you know, we need, who we uh, should start um, the process and we shot names back and forth, and today we've come with a few names and a few individuals. So if you indulge us in a little bit of your time, I greatly appreciate it. So the first um lady we'd like to, like to ask to come forward and uh, stand up here in a circle here is Miss uh, Constance Cooney. Miss Constance Cooney just recently retired from the Department of uh, Public Safety where she served her people as a servant and how she gave herself and everything to the job. And so she's given over thirty three years of dedicated service to the Department of Public Safety, serving in various positions. She began, began her career in law enforcement as a patrol officer in nineteen eighty eight. She then excelled, excelled in her hard work and dedication and became a ranking patrol sergeant in nineteen eighty five. And this advancement was advanced in time, law enforcement was mostly a male-dominated career. In nineteen ninety one, after a brief break, Connie returned to DPS as a CIA office assistant. And she held a position for nine years, then transferring to the records management from two thousand twenty, two thousand to two thousand twelve. And since two thousand twelve, Connie has held a position of injury prevention and in her current position as a data clerk or project coordinator for the.